Provide for him. Give us the fun that we need, the strength that we need, and encouragement to continue on. Father, I assist in Christ Jesus' name and all of God's people. Amen.
Amen.
You come on here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get him down, I'd like to say something. A lot happened this week after the hurricane. We have some individuals in our staff here and legend officials did a great job. It was so organized, it was unreal. Sheriff Vickers was outstanding, he was there every day, every morning, night. And Jeffrey was there too. There were so many people, I could call names, but I'll miss some of them. Bradley Kenall, EMS, great job. It was just, it was phenomenal, the things that they did to make everybody's life better because it was bad. And we had people come from not adjoining counties, but other counties on toward the mountains. People came, flew in helicopters. I just thought you all liked to know that, you probably doesn't. Paper is probably gonna pick it up this time, he did pretty hard. But we just had everybody, the schools were very dictated, these are schools for shelters. And food was there, water, food cots. And it was a lot of people just got involved and did it. A phenomenal job, I just want to thank everybody. Just give 'em a hand. All right, speak your mouth again.
Both approve the sign.
Both approve this. Second, Mr. Peterson, all in favor, I. Pro note. At this time, we have a public hearing to receive comments on the 2017-18 community transportation program. At this time, I'm declaring the meeting open. Anybody want to come up and say something about it? Say your name, position.
I'm just here to answer any questions. Can't bore them or transplain.
Okay, good. Anybody have anything to ask me to support? No one got any questions. I declare the public hearing closed at this time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we have some people that are here. We got, we got some.
I got one thing.
Go ahead.
So you know, I agree with everything you've said earlier, Reverend, how you said. But you know, and the sheriff, everybody knows this, but I was down in Rowan and Kip. And I tell you what, I know Lumberton's bad, but our own people right here in this county is bad. Now that's a pitiful situation down there. And then people down on Rowan, down 210, the road's still blocked, couldn't get, I was back down there yesterday, couldn't get through this. That's a pitiful situation. Which I know Lumberton all is too, but this is our, this is our own people right here in our county. That's really, that's pitiful down there.
And I'd like to, to a matter of interest, Ray Martin, he needs to say something about things, how they went with his insight. What do you want?
I'll be glad to, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Well, you did a good job of commending so many who are worthy of commendation. As you indicated, our emergency services, public safety, human services, staff members did an outstanding job. The spirit of cooperation and teamwork was very strong, and it was evident when you were here. As you, as Mr. Smith indicated, there were citizens who were very much affected by this flooding. And not only in the Rowan area, but also in the White Oak, Kent Tarheel community as well. And so it caught so many people by surprise early Monday morning. But we were very fortunate to have outside resources to come in to help in the EOC. Folks from McDowell County, as well as sheriffs, departments from our sheriff's offices, from Gaskin County, Randolph County, a variety of communities throughout the state. And so they were a wonderful blessing. And here, just over the weekend and late last week, the generosity that has been shown by people here in Bladen County, as well as others throughout the state, has been tremendous. And so that's wonderful to see as well. But you know, it's certainly been a learning experience. I do want to let you know we'll have an after-action review meeting next week to try to learn from anything that we can, you know, from the experience we've had this past week, and to see what we can improve upon in future instances. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work and continued support in this effort.
I was around about all week, I was in Tarheel, Kelly, Blainborough. It's just amazing, Bladen County needs to hold her head up for the people that we got employed. I mean, there's employees that work 24 hours around the clock, I know David did. And there's others that just work around the clock to do this. And we had, I mean, the sheriff of Brunswick County, John Hennig, brought his helicopter, brought his airboats in and things like that, to help rescue people from White Oak to Kelly. And I didn't hear the first squabble. I mean, it was a, it was a well-oiled machine. And when the guys left, they were in charge of the command center, Greg, they wanted to get the pictures made with us. And they were just so appreciative of the people they worked with, because they were saying one county that those people were at, that they just left. They couldn't get along with the people there, and they just left. And everywhere I went, everybody was just so gracious for our hospitality and the things that were going on. And we're not through it yet, people.
That's right.
We're in the recovery stage. And I know Sheriff was over there at Abilac today, and he said they were trying to get that store back. But it was, it was completely underwater. And I mean, I seen grown men cry, I seen people having to go to the hospital because they were stressed out. I mean, and people just staying there, wouldn't leave till it was all over. People trying to work, worried about how they were gonna rescue. They used horses, they used everything they could, every resources available, to rescue people during this time. And the ones that seen it, it was just amazing that you can take as many employees that we got, and how it can come together like that, and everybody's willing to help and put their time involved, and just, what can I do next? I mean, it was a, it was a picture that I'll never forget. And I am so appreciative and gracious for our employees and the citizens of Bladen County, the way they reacted to this hurricane. It was, it was a picture to be shown, and thank you.
I want to say one thing, I thank the county for the use of one of the buildings, the Etown Rescue was flooded completely out. We had to move the rescue squad, that's a volunteer squad. I want to thank the county for that, we have moved into a county building out there beyond, in the industrial park. And we thank you all for that. Our entire building was flooded, down on Merchant Mill Road. So we have moved out beyond the flood area, we hope so. But thank you all for everything. Keep having work really good together, and I really appreciate all of that. Thank you all very much.
Okay, this time, we got some employees to recognize for your service. We're gonna go out there and do it. After we get through, we're gonna have a little get-together in the reception room, hotel room, on our two-door van. Yeah, everybody's welcome to come to that. We got somebody that couldn't come, but we're gonna get the ones that did come, in fact. Thanking for their usual service, can blame them now. Free, go ahead, today.
First one of the ladies, Shimon Louie.
Shimon Louie, it's on here.
Five years of service.
Let me read it for you, please. Not very long. Appreciation, Bladen County, that this certified, Shimon Louie has given exceptional service, and has obtained special recognition for years of dedicated service on this 17th day of October, 2016. And we thank you for your service, Bladen County.
Thank you.
I have to say a few nice little things about you, Shimon. Shimon came to Bladen DSS as a temporary worker with the job link. And she eventually became a permanent employee with the WorkFirst program. And that's where she has found her niche. Up until recently, she has transferred to the food stamp unit. And you started there last, no, today. Today was the first day. So she has been broken in well today. We are still seeing clients over there. So Shimon has been a dedicated employee, she's always working hard for her clients, trying to assist them, to connect them to the correct services, what can assist them most. And we appreciate you for that, Shimon.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all, thank y'all so much.
Next, we have Sylvia Charles, 10 years of service.
10 years. Ms. Charles, we are, Bladen County is certified that Sylvia Charles has given exceptional service, and has obtained special recognition for your dedicated service on this 17th day of October, 2016. Commissioners, thank you very much. Here we go. Peanut butter. And she wants to say something about you.
Sylvia came into DSS in the income maintenance area, and she found her niche to begin with. She started out in the food nutrition services area, and that's where she remains today, assisting those clients. She is always one that is gonna go that extra mile for the client. She's dedicated and committed to the agency, and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next, Emily Brunson, 25 years.
Emily Brunson, on behalf of Bladen County Commissioners and citizens, a certificate of appreciation from the county of Bladen, that Emily Brunson has given exceptional service, and has obtained special recognition for years of dedicated service on this 17th day of October, 2016. Thank you. Have a good night. Yep, tight bridge, why did it?
Emily has been with us 25 years, and yes, it takes a dedicated employee to be able to stay with DSS for 25 years. Something that I found interesting, she came to us at the receptionist area.
Yes.
She did. And now she is a social worker with the Adult Protective Services Unit. She came to the agency with a degree, and went straight from the receptionist area to adult services. Currently, she is our intake worker in adult protective services. She's taking those reports of abuse and neglect and exploitation of our elderly, and she's connecting them to those resources that they need. Emily, she is one of our, how did we say? She is one of our niches that we have. She, like I said, she does connect everyone to those resources. She's one of those that we can always go to. When we feel like we don't know what to do, we go to Emily, she has answers for us. And we certainly appreciate that, Emily.
Next, there, Miss Wanamon Row. 20, 20 years of service.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's here.
Yes, my boss.
Sweetie. At this time, Bladen County Commissioners would like to present a certificate of appreciation to you. You've been in this place for years, and I really appreciate it. The county of Bladen certified that Wanamon Row has given exceptional service, and has obtained special recognition for years of dedicated service on this 17th day of October, 2016. I'm gonna let him give it to you.
Well, I'm gonna say a few things about this lady right here. She's been here 20 years with the sheriff's office at the same. And she started off at the jail, and she went through BLET and got certified an officer, and got involved in the DAP program with the SRO, School Resource Officers. And she's done a wonderful job there.
You've done your homework.
That's right. Last year, I made her the boss, I promoted her to corporal, because she does this good job. She's a leader, and you want to do, and you have to deal with people. And now, what I'm doing now, is trying to get her to come on that work part-time. She's gonna retire Thursday, first of October. And she says she will do some man hunting, or deer hunting. I knew some kind of hunting. She's gonna hunt, she thinks, till January, but I'm gonna bring her back here about the first December. And she's gonna help us out, part-time, the SRO.
Some kind of hunting.
And we can pull it up. But she, I, you sure won't man hunt?
Not season, only January.
I know. I am very proud of her, I really don't fear her going. She's done a tremendous job for us, and she'll all be a part of this family, that's all, I'm sure, of this county. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, Cass is always appreciated. I have enjoyed my years of service, and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. We got, no, he got, he gonna read off the ones that couldn't make it.
We have others to recognize, Divisional Agent Michael McGavitt, five years. Social Services, Jennifer Dunham, five years. Catherine Mazur, 20 years. Sharon McGavitt, 25 years. Karika Newkirk, 30 years. EMS, Linda Bagwell, five years. Stephen Hester, five years. Marion Moore, five years. Donna Cagle, 10 years, EMS. Health Department, Lisa Britt, five years. Tawana Lewis, 15 years. Also, the library, Leah Primarty, five years. Again, the sheriff department, Tremaine Harvey, five years. For a total of 17 employees, thank you.
Thank y'all. This time, we have reception, everybody's invited. Agribite, huts, this time, we have reception.
You may emanate from Columbus. A problem in Brunswick may emanate from somewhere else. So the counties could actually be duplicating efforts in some of these places. So I wanted to put together something regional that would cover the whole area in the Lower Cape Fear River Basin. So I came up with this idea for a study, a regional drainage study, using drones and all kinds of tech, really cool technology. I talked to a couple engineers, we're using the engineering firm of McKinnon Creek. And I said, well, what do we need for this? How is this gonna be plausible? What are we gonna need to make this happen? So then I put together a committee. The committee were the soil and water folks for all five districts. County staff was there for all five districts, the Army Corps of Engineers. Who else was it there? Engineers, soil and water, county staff. I'm drawing a blank, but I'll probably think halfway through it around myself. But we all got together, and we all tried to figure out, how can we work collaboratively on that? And more importantly, what monies are out there to do it? There is funding out there on the federal and the state level. So the state actually passed, General Assembly passed a bill, and passed the House, but got stuck in the Senate. And I'd been having conversations with Ken Waddell over this, who's gonna be, hopefully, coming to our luncheon on Monday, next Monday, two weeks. And you know, I said, look, you know, what are the chances? And he said, you know what, it passed the House, but HB2 just sort of stopped a lot of this type of legislation. They got the bigger things through, but HB2 was an issue. And he said, what are you doing about getting other monies? I said, well, I applied for a grant from Z Smith Reynolds, which we got $50,000. I just submitted an application for Duke Water Resources grant for another $75,000. The Army Corps of Engineers has something called a TAS, a Technical Assistance for States grant, which is up to $100,000. And then there's the Water Resources Fund out of the North Carolina, out of the State DEQ. And a lot of the funders, in order to be an applicant for that, you have to be either a 501(c)(3), a unit of government. Some of them, it's only 501(c)(3), it's more than private funders, only wanna give to other nonprofits. You have groups like the state, which will only give to local governments. So even though KFear RCMD is running, we're organizing a project, we brought everybody together, and we're bringing in funds from different resources, we cannot, as a 501(c)(3), apply for the DEQ, the funds in DEQ for the water resource. The Goodwood Dudes, Z Smith Reynolds, and a lot of the other ones. But that particular grant, you have to be a unit of government. So Greg here, who's president of our board, I said to Greg, I said, you know, we could have Bladen County actually be the applicant, we could do the work, but you would be the applicant. And the $50,000 through an MOU, we would give to the county, or jointly through an MOU, and work together. And whatever money, the thing with the water resources, is they will match what you have. So we have $50,000, and if we can get $10,000 in kind over like a two-year period from a combination of Bladen staff and soil and water, which, you know, gets $5,000, $2,500 over a year, which is, I think, pretty reasonable, then we could ask them for $60,000, because it's a one-to-one match. So I'm really hustling, trying to get everybody, as much as I can by that deadline, to build up the kitty. So what would happen is, and I think, you know, this needs to be explained, it just seems kind of weird, is we'll be working with Greg, and probably Greg as well, and we will be having, you guys will have to be the applicant, but through an MOU, we'll be the fiscal agent, running the funds, and so forth and so on. Does that make sense? That's just because we're not a unit of government like you are. Charles, I'm sure you have a question for me, you'll think of something. Let's give you a few minutes, I'm sure you'll come up with one.
I don't need no time, I have no questions at this point.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yes, sir.
I have a lot of constituents that called me about drainage problems, and it consists of, like they said, palm land, it's flooded, and they can't use it, can't get the cops off of it.
Yep.
Would this project correlate with soil and water to help alleviate those problems?
Yes, because I taught a great point. I, I've talked to, we met with folks in Raleigh at the Soil and Water, for the North Carolina Soil and Water. And Yarborough, who is assistant, Troxler, couldn't make it, but he was supposed to be there. And we've been having, I've been having, through emails and conversations through Lynn Sprague with him, to try to get some money from the Ag Trust Fund. So not to say this is a good thing, but the fact that it's farmland will help us leverage funds from the Ag Trust Fund next year. So yes, absolutely, see, everything gets thrown in. This is a study, and since this is not a particular project, but a study, as long as we can show that residents in farmland are affected, then there are different funders whose priority will be that particular thing. Like, for example, the Ag Trust Fund, they'll look at farmland. And also in the General Assembly, when I go up there to lobby for some of the funds, I'm hoping to reintroduce House Bill 94, but it'll be under another number, you know? That they see in there that farmland is a big part of it, absolutely.
Another question. Will the federal entity, EPA, would that also be able to correlate with what you guys are doing?
Unfortunately, at this time, there are no funds available through EPA that match the criteria for what we're looking for. Now, it's interesting, USDA in May, I'm not sure whether they will at this time or not. Working with NRCS, at this time, no, because when they release these grants, they often have a very strict set of criteria. But our best bet are gonna be through funders like Duke, Z Smith Reynolds, as well as the State Department of Environmental Policy.
Talk a little bit about the EEG in the right amount of hospital.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of funny. The environmental enhancement grant, I, I applied for that. That's also through the Department of Justice. Several years back, the Department of Justice, Z Smith Field Foods, and through a settlement, they were awarded millions of dollars. So the Attorney General's Office has put aside millions of dollars, and is releasing that funds little by little through grants. I applied for those funds with this particular project, but were turned down because it was not a project. It needs to be a shovel-ready project. So I made the argument, well, it depends on what you mean by project. To me, a study or a survey is a project. The useful information that will be in there is, to me, like a project. They wanted more of a shovel-ready project. But what's so important about this, once this is done, two-to-three-year period, once the area is surveyed, the problems are pinpointed, and remediation, suggestion for ways to remediate the problem is in this, then when it comes to leveraging funds for projects, you're gonna have an invaluable document. Because that document is gonna be, there was a study done, and the study specifically stated this. So when it comes to individual projects and locations and places where there are, where you need money to do those projects, this document will help you tremendously. And that would be perfect for the EEG grant as well. But they, they don't like studies and, I think it's a project, I think the study's a project, but they didn't. So does that answer your question, sir? But we're definitely looking at the farmland, too.
Notice to approve the resolution, this falls category regional drainage study.
One second. Notice, Mr. Peterson, second one, Mr. Call of duty, all in favor, I?
Okay, thanks. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, this time, finance officer. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson.
That's alright. Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come talk a little bit about my department. That's the last. Sorry. But I'm Kelsey Edwards, I'm the library director of Bladen County. Oh, you're all in control of it, or I'm not?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm sure all of you know, that we do have three library branches in the county. We have one in Clarkton, Clarkton Public Library, and then we also have Bridger Memorial Library in Blainborough. And then our main library branch, Leighton Elizabeth Town. The branch is not in Elizabeth Town, those are through agreements with the towns. They provide the buildings and a few other, other things to help us out as well. The main branch, the building is county-owned, of course. And I want to thank y'all for all your support of the library, you know, as far as giving us funds to help our patrons. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so some of our library surfaces. We have free public Wi-Fi, which is used very often, because I guess a lot of, most people have their cell phones or their tablet cell, they might even bring their laptops, but they like having a public Wi-Fi access point that's free. We have public access computers for those who are not able to bring their own devices. And a lot of people now don't even have their own laptops like they used to, so they might, may just have a tablet. But if they need to type something for schoolwork, or type a resume, our public access computers are very helpful for them. And we do provide printing and copying services, so that if they do need to print out a job application, or print out schoolwork, or anything like that, they're able to do so. At the library in Elizabeth Town, there's the large meeting room that is available for community use. And we have children's storytimes, as well as adult and children's special programming, reference services, helping patrons find the information they need, you know, whether they're working on a school project, or, I kind of foresee that we might have patrons coming in who might need to use our computers to apply for FEMA disaster assistance. And we have made And we have made a special page on our library website for after the storm and has some information on there for them. Um, but they may look, need a little bit of our help using the computer and accessing that. Um, we have the Wanda Campbell Historical Room. Has a lot of genealogy and local history items. We have people from out of state come use that. A lot of people from out of county come use it and the people in the county. Um, one of the newer services we have is Brain Fuse. That provides online tutoring and online job help. Um, during the hours of two to about eleven PM every day of the week, they provide free online tutors for anyone who has a library card with us. They can access it at home. Um, there's also free job coaching during those same hours. Uh, they do, again, have to have the library card, but they can use that service on our computers or on their own at home as long as they have a Bladen County library card. Um, and there are a few blackout dates around holidays as well when people can use that. Um, and, you know, outreach services. So we've got our homebound service as well as Busy Bus. Busy Bus goes out to daycares and preschools in the county, and they do storytimes. They go to all areas of the county. Um, they go to Toddville, um, to Blainford, Elizabeth Town, Clarkton. Um, they go to Baltimore Head Start. Um, and for some of them, they go and do crafts with them as well, not just the storytimes. And then Bookmobile still goes out with that picture of Bookmobile there. Um, and there's a few pictures of some of our special programs. Again, I mentioned, we have special children's programs during summer reading. Um, the picture, I don't know if you see, a whole lot of people in the picture with her and her back to you in his white shirt. That's when we gave away free school supplies with Goodwill Community Foundation providing the school supplies. And we gave about a hundred and ninety-six bags of free school supplies to children in the county. Um, we do special holiday programs for kids as well, as well as special adult programs. And the one picture I have of a special adult program was one that was recently, and it was a no-cook appetizer program that my part-time staff member did. And we had someone come to that program who had not been to the library in years and said, "Oh, this was so much fun. I'm going to start coming back to the library." So we offer fun and education and things that people need, so.
Question. Uh, is there a call for students in regards to printing and copying?
Yes, the printing is ten cents per page, black and white. We're working on getting coloring, color printing ever since Robin was able to get the cheaper price for that, but we haven't done that yet.
And the Brain Fuse, what's the web address for that?
Um, if you go to our library's website, would you go back to the first slide, Robin? Okay, so our library's website down there, thebladenco dot libguides dot com slash home. Um, you can scroll down a little bit, and it says Brain Fuse Help Now. Just click on that link, and it'll take you to where you have to put in your library card number. Then you'll be able to proceed from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was, wow. Fifty good news.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give you an update of forty-five percent of the year from September the thirtieth. If you can see on our general fund revenues, we've collected thirty percent expenditures. We spent twenty-four point three four. The jail construction, we're spent thirty-eight percent of the budget. And right now, we've got a hundred percent, we've collected all of that, so we're good there. Uh, solid waste, we're at forty-one percent of our revenues, and we've spent thirty-five percent. Mercy's telephone, we've spent, received seven point six five percent and spent forty-six, and that's also in things in cover. Water fund, we've collected twenty-eight point four one percent and spent eleven point five eight. Anybody have any questions about that?
Good job. Next, uh, I'm sure you're service, Mr. Bickens, Mr. Director, if you can come forward. Just out there regarding food nutrition services.
Good evening. We have a bustle of activity going on at the Department of Social Services since last week, and we just wanted to come in and kind of update you where we're at. Currently, USDA has not released any disaster food nutrition benefits. You may also hear this program of disaster benefits referred to as DSNAP. Currently, food nutrition benefits are operating as replacement benefits. Um, this is for anyone that is currently receiving food stamps. They can come in and request replacement of what they received in September. And that deadline is tomorrow. Um, and then we also do have regular food nutrition applications.
What do you mean by replacement?
Um, for a client that received benefits in September, they are eligible to receive replacement. They come in and say, "I've been without my power. "I've lost all the food in my refrigerator or freezer." They can request a certain percentage of their food stamps to be replaced.
You, how do you verify that?
You do not currently under this program.
Well, what time you open in the morning?
Eight-thirty.
Then I'll be there.
Okay. If you don't receive food stamps, you're not eligible for replacement.
Oh, I knew that was a catch.
But we may can help you later on.
I just don't make sense to maybe somebody that's coming in just goes on food stamps and there's no way to there, but.
Right. Um, this is.
You know, arms are.
This is based upon USDA regulations, federal program. Okay. Um, to assist the Bladen County households since the disaster, Bladen DSS, we have offered extended hours. We operated Saturday and Sunday for four hours. And today, and tomorrow, we'll be open to eight o'clock to assist those households that do work, that are not able to get to the agency within the day. So we're trying to show our efforts to assist those working families.
That's for the food nutrition program?
Excuse me?
That's for food nutrition?
Correct, just only food nutrition. We're, after five o'clock or on the weekends, all we're doing is food nutrition. And I wanted to show you what we've been doing with these extended hours. At a glance, on Saturday, from one to five in four hours, we assisted eighty-two households. Sunday, we assisted a hundred and fifty-nine households. And today, as of five o'clock, we had assisted four hundred and six households, for a total of six hundred and forty-seven households.
The word got out?
Yes. And everybody that is receiving food stamps, they are eligible for the replacements. Um, or if a household is not currently receiving food stamps, they can come in and apply for food stamps to assist them with the foods that they have lost.
There you go, Charles.
Under the regular program.
Appreciate y'all, but I'll pay.
Hot off the press, we did receive an administrative notice right about five o'clock today that North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has extended the loss and request for replacement benefits to October the twenty-eighth. That deadline of October the eighteenth that you saw earlier on the screen, that has been extended to October the twenty-eighth. And that is based upon the damage and the families that have been affected by Hurricane Maggie. Due to this extension, Bladen DSS, we will return to normal operating hours on Wednesday, October the nineteenth. That'll go back to eight-thirty to five. What we have to look forward to, we are having daily statewide food nutrition conference calls with the state. Each day, today, we had two. Um, possible release of disaster food nutrition benefits. Um, currently, we have developed and we are refining a plan to operate the disaster food stamp program if the program is released. We do not know at this point. Um, the state was supposed to send a request to USDA today on what we were requesting in order to operate a disaster food stamp program. Um, also this week, we are preparing to train our staff for the distribution of the disaster food stamps.
How would you determine the amount that you were requesting? You had to make a plan for it?
What we're doing, what this is, we're looking at, that because of the masses, we have a little under four thousand households that are receiving food nutrition services. So we're having to look at that we've got to assist them. There's going to be masses of people coming into the agency if they do release disaster food stamps. Um, so we're having to look at that we will possibly do outpost off-site into other community, other communities in the county. Um, what they will encourage us to do is look at the communities that were most affected from the disaster, for us to go out and go to those communities to take applications.
So you actually go out and take applications?
Yes, that is one of the requirements that they will expect from us.
Did you say four thousand receive food stamps in Bladen County or more?
Right now.
More than that?
Well, our last report, it was about thirty, right at thirty-seven hundred on the report from Septeem- no, 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 that was August. That was August.
I know that, I'm not sure about the number of recipients, but I know the total dollar figure is just over a million dollars per month on average.
Well, because with the A-bods, our caseloads have decreased, so we're a little under.
All right, okay.
A million now. It's in the bout, it's over, um, I've checked it before I left the agency. We were like eight-hundred-and-sixty-some thousand.
Okay, well, it has gone down.
It has gone down some.
Well, I'm asking, when you're saying thirty-seven hundred and four thousand, you're looking at a scenario of those of houses with other individuals that not own food stamps, but still remain the four thousand?
Well, when, if the disaster food stamp program is released, anyone who lost food is eligible to apply for food stamps.
So you don't have to make a determination on how much you find you would need. They just make it available?
They'll make it available.
Okay.
Do you verify that?
USDA does not require the children, very high. Now, after that, there is an audit. Um, there will be a sample that is pulled, and it will be audited. And anyone within your agency that applies, there's a hundred percent audit on their employees.
Dis discrimination.
Excuse me?
That's discrimination.
That's USDA guidelines.
Z Smith, I'd like for you to send the PI information on this to WDLA.
They have our information. Um, I visited with them on Friday.
Okay.
And they did, we have received a release from the state, and we did do a recording, but they were having some phone technical difficulties and didn't know when they could get it on.
Did you talk to Mr. Kenlaw?
Yes, sure did. Um, also, we have been given updates on Bladen Online, and we've been forwarding it to Bladen Journal and to our Facebook page for Health and Human Services as well.
One question, maybe you'll get to it, is the perspective, prospect of people getting funds available in the conversation, are they going to make funds available? Do you feel reasonable that they're going to make some available?
Yes, I, I feel that there will be. Um, like I said, the state has not told us yet if we will have a disaster program, but just based upon what we have seen in the past with storms and disasters there has been.
Do you have to plot food stamps every month?
No, sir.
What if someone got it in September?
Mm-hmm.
So they just get ten percent more? What'd you say?
No, for the replacement food stamps. I'm just going to throw some figures out.
Uh, just, what's replacement? How do you determine replacement, ten percent?
No, it's based upon what the household feels they have lost due to the loss of power. And we accept their statement.
So, so does any of that fall on the FEMA or anything?
No, comes from USDA. We've, from what we have seen in the past, anyone in the county, once you go into the disaster food stamps, is eligible to apply. Now, there will be regulations and eligibility requirements. Sometimes that is a little more relaxed, because we've heard tell folks that have lost everything in their freezers, they've been stocking up, and it's a huge amount of money for someone to try to replace. So that's what this is for. Um, there are twenty-three counties within the state that USDA is working with currently.
But Bickens, do they have to come in to apply and apply by phone?
Um, they can apply online at E-Pass.
Um, they're not for the disaster?
Not for the disaster. Okay, that has to be face-to-face, or either come to the site.
Do what?
They can, they have to come to the agency to apply for the disaster, or either go to one of the sites that we might would have.
Where are the sites looking?
Um, I'm, at this point, Dr. Blanks, I don't want to say where we're looking at, because I'm afraid that if we state that, people will start showing up, and we're not, we're not there yet.
Well, people like in East Darkated and Kelly, it's twenty-five miles. People might be twenty-five, I'll get somebody to bring.
Right.
The elderly.
Right.
It's a hardship on those.
Yes, ma'am. And we are, we're looking at those areas.
You ought to make some provisions. FEMA can't make some provisions, or you owe to assist those people.
Well, we are, we're choosing sites. We're.
You want them?
We're choosing sites, communities, basically, that have been most affected by the storm. That's where we will go to take.
You can't do outreach there?
Yes, yes, we will go there.
People of other communities come and overrun that site?
Well, right now, Dr. Blanks, we're even having to accept replacement requests from other counties. We've had, today, we had over seventy people from out of county to come to Bladen County to request, because their agencies have been closed. Um, so everybody, all the surrounding counties are having to absorb what they were not able to do.
Would that affect your?
But I mean, can't you, just a minute. Can't you ask FEMA to help you establish because of the situation they're in, to establish outreach? It's better for one worker to go out to a satellite site than those forty people trying to hire somebody to.
Well, we are, we are.
Come to a centralized place.
Right.
During this crisis situation.
Right, we are establishing sites to go out to, into the communities. We will have workers going out to communities to take.
How are you planning on making that known to the residents of that area?
It will be on the airwaves, in the reliable news sources. We will have it posted. We will get information out to the community, to the, to the residents of Bladen County.
Very good.
We will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Any other questions about disaster food stamps? This is as much as we know as of right now. Um, just wanted to give you an update of what's going on and what the hub of activity that has been going on. It has been basically hands-on, all hands-on dead. Um, I was asked to give an update on FEMA. Um, FEMA did visit the families that were located at the East Bladen Shelter. Currently, there is no confirmation of community outpost sites for FEMA in Bladen County. We've not heard of anything in that regards. Um, FEMA is visiting families that have made applications for assistance. We have heard this, okay? Um, the FEMA contact information and application to FEMA can be made online at wwwdisasterassistance.gov. Um, telephone applications can be made at one eight hundred six two one three three six two, and by the KTY services, one eight hundred four six two seventy-five eighty-five.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Monmet?
Yes, sir.
Do we outreach to FEMA to get assistance for our residents here in the county? Do we do anything to make any contact?
We, I know Mr. Bradley Kenlaw had a conversation with a representative regarding the location of the site in Bladen County for FEMA representatives to set up, and that will be at the Ag Center. But as far as when that will actually take place, we don't have any information about that. And I told Mr. Kenlaw later today about that, and he did not.
The reason I was asking, we said some people lost their homes totally when it started up.
No way to go.
Are they going to come in with any kind of assistance? Are they gonna come in with any kind of assistance to give out kind of housing or?
Well, I, I'm not sure about that, as, 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 uh, Ms. Smith indicated, uh, we have been told that they are going around to, we know, they came to the shelter at East Bladen and met with residents there and we understand they're going around to individuals' homes to, uh, meet with them there. So that's why we're really, that, that's really, as far as my sheet about issues from the storm, that's really the biggest unknown at this point is when they're going to set up shop at the Ag Center to, uh, for residents to.
Mr. Martin, our role is gonna be to first send a place and, and assist citizens of where the place is gonna be and maybe the information we could just give. That's gonna be our role in FEMA. We're not going out, uh, in nobody's behalf to, to talk FEMA.
And we are encouraging that, that telephone number is one eight hundred six two one, just to make it easy for you, one eight hundred six two one FEMA, the three three six two is one eight, is, is FEMA, so one eight hundred six two one FEMA. And that's what we've been sharing with citizens at this point.
And I don't think FEMA gives that much money, they, they make you a loan out, they don't give you the money.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well, you got to have something, a loan, a grant, or something, your house is.
I understand if a person's house is completely lost and we don't have any kind of emergency assistance or any resources to aid a family when they run into a situation, how does that, so what do we do? How do we function to provide some type of support?
We don't.
That's all I was asking.
You can have a make the telephone call, these people don't have a telephone and they don't know how to do it.
I was asking the question.
I understand also that there is an app and it's the, um, from different contacts that we've heard from persons out in the community, that the application to FEMA is very simple. It's just click, 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 just very simple questions. And I think from that, that's when they contact you, contact the family, um, and they make the appointment to come out and, and view the home to verify the damage.
Okay, Miss Smith? Pretty good.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much. Next item on, there's, uh, number nine is a valuable acquaintance. Last time they did, uh, East Katedon, uh, community three affiliates.
I, uh, I'm, uh, I make a motion that, uh, we may appoint, three of those with spelling ground.
Three of those.
The three, the present ones.
Real point, real point, Dr. Blanks.
They're with us.
Let's say.
All right.
Let's say.
You got, okay, motion, Dr. Blanks second by Mr. Cardell, favorite eye?
Uh-uh.
Um, item B is one.
Rebecca Hester.
Rebecca Hester has been nominated by Mr. Peterson, taken by Mr. Dallas, favorite eye?
Uh-uh.
Pose no. Keep Bladen Beautiful Board, one, a point.
Mike Shaw.
I have a motion, Mr. Smith, Mike Shaw will second, Mr. Peterson, favorite eye?
Uh-uh.
Pose no, motion carries. Um, all, number ten is a, um, letting you know that the next meeting, um, well, actually it's, uh, November twenty-first, we got, uh, Blakeville X five district, we won and Cockton five district, we need two acquaintances. Now we got, uh, kind of managed, Rick Martin will come forward, the calendar update, two wives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to review the calendar with you for the months of November, I'm sorry, October and November. And, uh, for tomorrow, October eighteenth, there is a candidates forum that is going to be held at Bladen Community College, the original site with the Ag Center, but we weren't sure exactly when the FEMA reps would be here, so that was, uh, relocated to Bladen Community College. And that is tomorrow evening.
What time is it, Chris?
Seventeen P M. Yes, sir. Also, the Lumber River Council Government's Annual Meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, the twentieth, has been postponed, it will be rescheduled at a later date.
It's giving great, just for, um, for local candidates, the state, right, everybody?
I understand it's for, uh, candidates, but the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education. This specifically for, and this is my understanding, it's specifically for the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education, just only those two offices.
Oh, just.
Is what I, I think, yes, yes. The event at, uh, Louisville that was scheduled for next weekend, the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, has been, uh, canceled at this point. Also, that weekend on Friday and Saturday is the Beast Fest in Bladensburg. To remind you on, excuse me, Monday, the thirty-first at eleven A M., as Kathleen Riley indicated earlier, the Cape Fear of R C and D Annual Meeting will be held at the Coastline Convention Center at eleven o'clock that day, it's a lunch meeting. Moving over to November, on Thursday, the third, at six P M., the Southeastern Economic Development Partnership's Annual Meeting will be held at the Cape Fear Vineyard and Winery in Elizabeth Town. On Monday, the seventh, at eight A M., there's a prayer service here. Um, there is a regularly scheduled meeting that evening for six-thirty P M., the first meeting of the month. However, the, that is the evening before the, um, voting day on the, on the eighth.
I made the motion to move that meeting to the fourteenth.
Motion, Mrs. Smith, to the fourteenth, second by Mr. Cardell, all favorite eye?
Uh-uh.
Pose no. I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, on Wednesday, the ninth, the Veterans Day Celebration will be held at the National Guard Armory here in Elizabeth Town, that's at eleven A M. Also, on Thursday, the tenth, at seven P, seven P M., the Bladen Fire Association Meeting will be held at the Carver's Creek Fire Department Office.
That might be moved because, um, it was supposed to have been at Flamer just past thirty, so it might just maybe, I'm not saying it will be, might.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So we might need to get a, a place for that and that.
Okay, thanks. Offices will be closed on Friday, the eleventh, in observance of the Veterans Day Holiday. The board, uh, so the board will meet on the fourteenth and then the board is scheduled to meet on the twenty-first at six-thirty P M. And offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, in observance of Thanksgiving Holiday. Uh, moving on to item B, you all may recall that a month or so ago, the county, the board authorized the county to apply for the Rural Income, I'm sorry, Rural Impact County Challenge. And this is for rural counties throughout the country, this is a NACO program for ten rural counties throughout the country. And fortunately, Bladen County was selected as one of the ten, so, um, this will be an opportunity over the course of the next year to have a community coach to come in and work with, uh, with Bladen County, I'm sure Mr. Howard at Health and Human Services and others, um, uh, to explore ways that we can improve the health and, and, um, economics of our county. And so that, that's an exciting project and we look forward to, uh, to moving forward with that. Just to let you know, one of the requirements is that an elected official attends a kickoff meeting that will be held in Tallahassee, Florida in early December. And so, um, we can have further conversation, Mr. Chairman, about who, who that may be. So I just wanted to let you all know that, um, that'll be coming up soon. Moving on also to item C, um, the practice has been when we've had weather events such as Hurricane Matthew, that building inspections fees have been waived for storm-related damage with whether it be flooding or wind-related damage and someone to approach the board to see if, um.
Motion, Mr. Peterson.
Oh, question. Question.
Uh, Mr. Martin, what do you mean by construction? You got damaged ground construction, not talking about new construction or?
No, no, sir, no, just a repair.
Okay.
Okay.
So you made more.
You said, Cardell second, all in favor, eye?
Uh-uh.
Pose no, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all I have this time.
Still adjourned.
Most adjourned, Mr. Peterson second, Mr. Cardell, favorite eye?
Uh-uh.
The adjourned. Thank you for calling.